Gentlemen, and welcome to the. I'll get it up.
Are you, are we up?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December sixteenth meeting of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Bruce Forster. I'm the chairperson of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals. To call this meeting to order, and will a clerk please call the rule?
Here, here. Here, here, here.
Next thing on the agenda is there a motion to approve the last meeting's minutes and a second?
Second.
Gene's motion, Glenn's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business tonight, but we start with, tonight we will begin the public hearings for Big Sky Repower petition number twenty dash P dash fifteen fifty seven, known as the Big Sky Repower. Application for an AG one, a special use permit to construct wind turbine generators in Lee County as part of the wind energy conversion system. As contemplated by the Lee County ordinance and our own rules of procedure, I will entertain a motion to appoint retired Judge Tim Slaven as our facilitator for the duration of this hearing.
So move.
Second.
Reg motions, Glenn seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Judge Slaven, it's all yours.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Lee County ZBA. Welcome and good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is healthy, remaining safe. My name is Tim Slaven, and I'm a retired circuit judge engaged as an independent contractor to what is called facilitate this hearing. I have no adjudicatory responsibilities. I am not for or against any particular position. I'm a neutral. I am here, hopefully, to add some organization efficiency and flow to these proceedings. This is BSW Devco LLC's petition, Lee County number twenty P fifteen fifty seven, for a special use permit to what is, in the vernacular, which I don't think is particularly descriptive, repower, a proposed wind energy conversion system, a WEX, in East Grove and May Townships here in Lee County. As shown by certificates of publication, notice of this hearing was published in the Amboy News on November twenty seventh of this year, and on the Dix, and in the Dixon Telegraph on November twenty eighth. Notices to adjoining property owners with one, within one and a half miles of the boundary of the existing project have also been provided. First of all, hoping you all understand, a notable portion of tonight's zoning board of appeal session will probably be taken up by organizational matters as we set some ground rules, excuse me, do some preliminary scheduling, and quite frankly, test out the technical and practical protocols we have planned to accommodate everyone, but keeping you all reasonably safe at the same time. Initially, because of the unique circumstances visited upon us courtesy of COVID nineteen and its recent spike in the positivity testing rate, in the nine counties of Illinois Region One, which has resulted in raising our mitigation tier of the Illinois Public, Public Health Restore Illinois Resurgence Plan, this hearing room's capacity is now limited to ten total people, which is entirely taken up by a reduced number of necessaries who will be required to wear masks except when, and except when speaking and are arranged about six feet apart. In addition to this former courtroom, there are socially distant spaces in the rear former jury room and appurtenances, which can accommodate thirteen people, ten interested parties, plus our Lee County IT, IT expert, State's Attorney Charlie Boonstra, and zoning and planning officer Dee Duffy. And in the first floor stairway lobby, we'll, we'll seat ten more interested parties in a safe manner. Any folks in either the rear jury room and the first floor lobby will be able to participate in these proceedings on a Zoom feed provided by the county. I hope this all makes everyone feel medically comfortable, and importantly, the meaningful upshot of all this is that thirty-three people can still be in this building and comply with the raised restrictions. Then, of course, an unlimited number of folks will be able to participate on the Zoom platform, or watch and listen on YouTube from more remote locations like their homes or businesses. Dee Duffy has gone to extraordinary lengths to advertise and post the Zoom entry and YouTube viewing information, but it never hurts to repeat such things. Obviously, if you're with us on Zoom, you already know this, but in case not, and you're listening otherwise, maybe on YouTube or on your phone, the Zoom meeting ID is nine one five three nine two three nine one five four, and the password is two zero nine eight four zero. That meeting ID and password will remain the same throughout the hearing. Accordingly, if you are with us in building tonight but are not comfortable with the safety protocols in place, you can always join us during future sessions from your home or business. The Zoom platform allows an interested party to actually participate. It is interactive. One may not only see and hear what is taking place, but when the appropriate stage comes, one may ask a witness questions, call a witness, testify, or give a closing comment. Further, in an attempt to be as trayer, excuse me, as transparent and inclusive as possible, we are also streaming this proceeding on YouTube. However, YouTube is not an interactive platform. On it, one can only watch and hear what is being said during the hearing, but not participate in it. As to YouTube, on your computer or cellphone, use your browser, go to www dot YouTube, that's all run together, Y O U T U B E dot com. In the search bar, type Lee County, IL, IL short for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. There's no need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. This should bring up a list of Lee County ZBA Youtubes. Input or select the date you want, which presumably tonight would be December sixteenth, twenty twenty, and voila, you should be seeing us here in the hearing room. However, please be advised that this YouTube feed will, because of those ubiquitous cyberspace thingies, have a short real-time delay. In case you are not a techno, techno geek, for assistance with any of these machinations, you may call eight one five nine seven three three four four nine, which is Ms. Duffy's helpline for technical assistance. I'm sure we all appreciate the protocols developed by the incredibly hardworking Dee Duffy and the expertise of Lee County's IT department headed by Mike McBride to allow these proceedings to even take place, particularly with so much accommodation given the circumstances. Now, for a bit more substance, as I've alluded, there are two groupings of attendees as this zoning board of appeals hearing moves forward. One, I have already alluded to, is necessaries. These are people who must attend this hearing in person. They consist of your hardworking, practically volunteer zoning board of appeals members, your marvelous zoning officer Dee Duffy, our expert IT technician Alice, your astute State's Attorney Charlie, Charlie Boonstra, the petitioner's attorney Dave Stryker, a witness, and of course himself, and hardly, but not least, our hardworking and skilled court reporter Kelly. The other group I will, the others I will group into what I will call interested parties. These are those of you folks who are with us either in building or more remotely on the Zoom video or teleconferencing platform, or you're viewing and listening the proceedings on YouTube, because you simply want to observe your county government at work, or beyond that, you have a particular interest in the proceedings. The next process I will try to explain is the methodology for interested parties to participate. I begin by emphasizing, please, please, know that everyone will have that opportunity, and I want to provide the opportunity to participate in a manner that is as orderly and as efficient as possible. However, because of the necessary electronic filtering, my usual process becomes even more central, and I will flesh out more of this further in my presentation tonight, and as we move through our time together in the weeks ahead. There are many possible reasons for an interested party's appearance this evening and during subsequent sessions, whether in person or remotely. You could be, one, a member of the public who is joining us simply as a citizen and spectator. Two, a member of the public who wants to be heard. This does not necessarily mean someone who is absolutely for or absolutely against the requested special use, but someone who wants to participate. If you are such a person, you will fall into any one or more, three, one, any one or more of three subcategories. One, you want to give testimony. This means you desire, under oath, to have you or a witness of your calling, to testify to facts relevant to the board's eventually decision. Such is not the time to describe your feelings or announce your opinion, but to aver facts, and you are subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to testify will be given one opportunity to do so. Or you want to be able to cross-examine witnesses, but please, that is just the time to ask questions of a particular witness, not to argue with him or her, or not to announce your own set of facts. Everyone so wishing to cross-examine will be given one opportunity to cross-examine each and every witness. Or three, you want to make a closing statement or a public comment. This is your opportunity to give a speech, to tell the board how you feel, or give them your opinion, based on the facts adduced during the whole hearing process, as to what their decision should be. During this closing statement or speech stage, one cannot allege new facts. When one thinks about it, the reason for that is, is, is very simple. The two most important parts of adducing the truth of a matter at a hearing such as this are missing, would, would be missing then. That person is not under oath, nor is that person subject to cross-examination. Everyone wishing to give a closing statement will be given one opportunity to do so. For those of you joining us on the Zoom platform this evening or in the future, that interactive software allows an interested party to indicate a desire, when the time comes, to ask questions of witness, to present one's own witness, to testify oneself, or to give a closing statement or make a public comment. So when I indicate that time has come to begin one of those interested party stages, I will ask for participation from the Zoomers, whether here in the old courthouse, at home, or in another more remote location. If one is video conferencing, one simply clicks on the icon at the bottom of the center Zoom screen labeled participants, and from the options that then appear, click raise hand. If one is remotely teleconferencing while remaining connected, one hits the star or asterisk symbol, and then the Arabic numeral nine on your phone. Either way, we should then see any raised hands, and I will call on each raised hand. However, unlike previous such hearings, I don't think we will be able to do so on a first raised, first come basis. So calling on raised hands will probably be more by random, referring to name, email address, or the last four digits of a phone number that appear on our display. Written communications sent in advance of this hearing, or any written material intended as something for the board to consider, is subject to Board Rule Article Five, Section Twelve, that eight copies be provided. Any communications received that do not comply with this requirement may not be considered by the board. I will now review the chronological progress of the hearing. I know that the following narration is really boring and really tedious, but please, reciting it is for everyone's benefit, to help you feel comfortable and not worry that you will not have a fair and complete opportunity to participate, but at the same time, to alert you when the three distinct opportunity forms of participation will present. The applicant, BSW Devco, has the burden of initially going forward. Accordingly, its agent or attorney may, may first make opening remarks. Then, the applicant presents evidence, one witness or document at a time. I will place each witness under oath or affirmation. After each applicant witness, the State's Attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And please, again, I emphasize, that is the time only for questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant's evidence, the zoning officer has the opportunity to present witnesses and documents. After each zoning officer witness, the State's Attorney, the zoning officer, and members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And once again, please, that is only the time for questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant and zoning officer have presented their respective evidence, then interested parties may present evidence, one witness, including themselves, or document at a time. I will place each such witness under oath or affirmation. After each interested party witness, the applicant, the State's Attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties have the opportunity to cross-examine. Then the applicant may offer rebuttal witnesses or documents one at a time. I will place such witnesses under oath or affirmation. Those may then be questioned by Mr. Boonstra, Ms. Duffy, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties, one at a time. If the applicant does present any rebuttal witnesses, interested parties may present surrebuttal witnesses, one at a time, and of course, those surrebuttals may be cross-examined by the, by the applicant, the State's Attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties. Finally, first, the applicant is given an opportunity for closing remarks, and then any interested parties will be given opportunity for the same, whether you call them closing statements, public comments, speeches, whatever term you prefer. There are some subrules, after which I promise I will be finished boring you any further. As you may have heard, each session has a time limit under the zoning board's rules of two and a half hours. However, we certainly don't want to cut off anybody right in the middle of something, so I will certainly make a reasonable effort to let someone finish a particular stage when the time limit has been reached, or if there is very little time remaining at the end of a stage, I may simply continue the session rather than starting on another stage that night. I also have, for everyone's benefit, the discretion to call short recesses. Under the zoning board's rules, I have the duty to rule on the admissibility of evidence. While the strict judicial rules of evidence do not apply, I will exercise some equitable control of what is being presented with or without an objection. We do, and will continue to have, a court reporter taking down what is said during these proceedings. I ask all, please be mindful of her job. She cannot take down two people talking at once. She doesn't know what nodding heads or gestures mean, and while I know she's very skilled, there is a limit to how fast a person can talk, including me, and expect her to keep up. I do ask for civility and decorum. This is certainly a public forum, but please be respectful of all who considered important enough to be here. I ask to refrain from displays of approval or disapproval, and as now with all public gatherings, I request that you either turn off your cellphone, or at least put, put it on silent. Lastly, your zoning board of appeals, these fine, hardworking, and practically volunteer gentlemen, act as finders of fact, much akin to a jury, and in that role, their decisions during the last stage of the proceeding, findings of fact and recommendations, are based on the sworn testimony, admitted exhibits, and closing statements they received during the hearing process. These gentlemen are your friends, your neighbors, your fellow citizens of Lee County, so please appreciate and respect their role as we move through the days and weeks ahead. I ask you, please, don't put them in a compromised position by privately lobbying them, or having extra hearing conversations or correspondence, until the entire hearing, including their decision, has been completed. In fact, they've been asked to avoid these appearances of impropriety by politely telling an interested party something like, I'm sorry, but I'm not allowed to discuss the matter until the ZBA's work of finding and facts and recommendations has been completed. Thank you all for your kind understanding in all of these regards. All right, gentlemen, housekeeping, before I forget, which I often almost do. Let's talk about our collective calendars. I have in the near future at least some proposed dates. So I'll go through the list. I know the first one I want, I want to ask, I asked the others, as we finished up the last stage of, of Duke, South Dixon Solar, but Mr. Pratt, Monday, the twenty-first, which is like four or five days from now. Is that good? Okay. All right, gentlemen and ladies, everyone. Thursday, the twenty-ninth, Mr. Forster. Mr. Burrow.
Yes.
Mr. Bothy. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
Ms. Duffy. Alice. Mr. Boonstra. Mr. Stryker.
But that unfortunately does not look.
Yep. Yeah, that one's out, gentlemen. Okay, moving to the next day, Wednesday, the thirtieth. Mr. Forster.
Yes.
Mr. Burrow.
Yes.
Mr. Bothy. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
Ms. Duffy. Alice. Mr. Boonstra. Kelly. Mr. Stryker.
Judge, Mr. Cutie can be here and I have to have an attorney something.
Your, your call. Your, your, your call. Okay. Only, only three more. Monday, the fourteenth, Mr. Forster. I thought these were going to be the gentlemen. You guys are up, you five are planning to be the, the board for this, right? Okay.
Parks is still appearing as an alternative.
Sure, sure, but, um, the fourth, Mr. Forster.
Which date?
Monday, the fourth. Uh, Mr. Burrow.
Yes.
Mr. Bothy. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
Ms. Duffy. Alice. Mr. Boonstra. Mr. Stryker.
Yes, that works for us, Judge.
Kelly. All right. Tuesday, the fifth, Mr. Forster. Mr. Burrow.
Yes.
Mr. Bothy. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Ms. Duffy. Alice. Mr. Boonstra. Mr. Stryker. Kelly. Okay, one more. The nineteenth, which is Tuesday, the nineteenth. Mr. Forster.
Yes.
Burrow.
Yes.
Mr. Bothy. Mr. Hughes.
Al.
Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
Ms. Duffy. Ms. Henkel. Sorry. Uh, Mr. Boonstra. Mr. Stryker.
Yes, Judge.
Kelly. All right. I'm going to quit there. Now, as to time, we morphed into six o'clock the last hearing. I, I don't want to be the guy that says, we're going to do it, so is that, is everybody like that? Do I hear any problem with it? Mr. Stryker. Okay. Okay with you, Alice, and everybody, and Ms. Duffy? Okay, Charlie? Okay. Now, the dates I just gave are all what I'm calling, I've started calling available dates. They are not dates that these, this hearing is, that this, that we will recess this hearing to. They are available dates to recess to. At the, at the end of each night, I will try and remember to, well, no, I've got to remember, to announce the next date. The, the times will always be at six o'clock. If, after announcing a recess date, we have a weather event, and it's that time of year, and we have to cancel that night, I encourage everyone who is interested party or a necessity, a necessary, to go to the Lee County, Illinois zoning and, and planning office website, and there will be a notice as posted as to when the continued date will be. be a notice as posted as to when the continued date will be. Okay, I think that's enough housekeeping boring stuff. Mr. Stryker, on behalf of the petitioner, are you ready to proceed?
We are, we are ready, Judge.
You may. Is your mic working?
What's your, what's your number? Five, and what'd you say?
All right, very well. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces again. My name is David Stryker, and I'm the attorney for the petitioner, BSW Devco. I want to thank all of you in advance for attending this hearing. As the judge mentioned, we, one, recognize that it is a very large burden on the ZBA to go through a wind farm special use permitting hearing, and we promise to do everything we can to make this as streamlined as possible, recognizing that, again, as the judge recognized, you are all volunteers here to serve the best interest of the county, and we want to be very respectful of your time. We also recognize that we were here last year, and I'm going to take you through briefly why we're here again, and some of the differences. Before I do that, I want to again thank Dee Duffy and the entire Lee County staff, the state's attorney and Judge Slaven for being here. They're all a very important part of the process, and I think that how well Lee County runs and handles these zoning hearings is certainly a credit to you all in the county, and especially to Dee. I also want to thank all of the people out there, whether it's on Zoom, YouTube, or here in the building, that are participating. Having an informed constituency and residents participate in these type of hearings is absolutely crucial, and we look forward to the engagement that we will have with the interested parties. We learned a lot in 2019 about how our project is perceived in the public, and how we can make our project better from interacting with interested parties, and we hope to have that same dialogue here in 2020. So with that, let me tell you why we're here this evening. Again, we're very excited to be talking about this project. I know that the Big Sky Wind Farm has been here in the Lee and Bureau County communities for over a decade now, and there is a lot of wind development in Lee County, so I'm certain that you're all very familiar with it. And also, I know that I believe Lee County has already gone through a repowering of a wind farm before with the Mendota Hills project, so I think that you all, certainly after going through the SUP hearing for that, and given what we talked about last year under similar circumstances, I think you're all probably pretty well prepped on what we're going to be talking about here in 2020. But the good thing is, and we're very excited to be here, we think that we have a better project here in 2020 than we had in 2019. This is a project that currently consists of 114 wind turbines and produces about approximately 240 megawatts of power. When we're done with the repowering, this project will have the exact same output. One of the great things about a repowering is we're going to have the same output with 17 fewer turbines. So again, we are going to reduce the density of the project, and hopefully that density reduction certainly helps folks out locally, because, as we'll get into in the hearing, by being able to permanently decommission turbines, it allows us to strategically do that, again, taking the input from community stakeholders and the residents in and around our wind farm. So what we plan to do is, right now, as I mentioned, there's 114 turbines that comprise the project. Those all have Suzlon S88 turbines. We would decommission all of those turbines and put new turbines up that are a decade newer. One of the great things about these new turbines, as you'll hear through both Mr. Cutie's testimony and the testimony of some of our experts, is they are going to be quieter turbines at low wind speed, which I think is very important to the residents. One of the great things about a repowering, from a community perspective, is that the way Illinois does property tax via the statutory formula, when we repower these turbines, we will be setting the clock back 10 years, meaning all the depreciation that's been taking on the current turbines will be off the books, and we will be paying essentially what a brand-new project would be paying with regard to property tax. So that will benefit Lee County as a taxing district. It'll certainly be very beneficial to the Ohio, the Village of Ohio school system, and many of the other taxing districts in Lee and Bureau County. So we definitely view that as one of the major benefits of the county. And I want to stress, as I did in Bureau, that we fully intend to honor all of the commitments that we made as a project during the SUP process in 2019 here in 2020. And I know that's probably especially important to some of the folks that are out there listening right now, that if you were concerned about a particular turbine or a turbine number, and we had agreed to permanently decommission that turbine in 2019, we will absolutely honor that in 2020. And again, we intend to honor all the agreements, whether it's with the Village of Ohio, Ryan Wetland, all of our community contribution and participation agreements that were agreed to in 2019. We absolutely plan to honor those in 2020. So let me tell you why we're here again. In 2019, both Lee and Bureau County approved the repowering of the project specific to a GE, which is a very top-of-the-line turbine that you'll hear about, a GE 2.5 and a GE 2.3 megawatt machine. After approval in 2019, as the project moved forward, those turbines in the pipeline became unavailable, and for that and other reasons, the repowering slowed down. Now we're here in 2020. We are able to get a GE 2.7 turbine. And it's interesting, and I think, speaking for Jim Cutie, who's here, and he'll be one of our witnesses tonight, this has been a learning process for us, too, because as it turns out, and as you'll hear through the testimony, whether it's a GE 2.7, 2.5, or 2.3, there is a lot of commonality amongst those turbine models. Most importantly, I think, for all of your concerns, the rotor diameter will be the same, it will be 116-meter rotor. So what you'll hear is, whether it's sound, shadow flicker, signal interference, or impacts to local wildlife, those will all be essentially the same for 2020 as the testimony that you heard in 2019, because so much of that is related to the diameter of the rotor and the sound characteristics that that rotor makes as it goes through the air. Also of interest, and you'll hear through the testimony, all of these, this GE family of machines, and I don't know if some of you had a chance to look in the application, but we provided the specs, they all essentially come off the assembly line at a 2.7 rating, but depending on the software that you buy, you can have that 2.7-megawatt turbine derated to a 2.5 or 2.3. And we're going to be using, again, all the GE 2.7-116 models, but the software packages may vary within those turbines. It won't impact any of the sound, shadow flicker, other effects, but what you'll hear Jim say is, to take a 240-megawatt project, reduce 17 turbines, and keep that same power output, we're going to be adjusting the software packages in each of those turbines that we repower, so we can essentially put a puzzle together and have those 97 turbines equal the 240-megawatt output, which is the most that we can put out on the grid per our interconnection agreement. And I want to stress, these will be brand-new GE turbines, it'll be, I think, a big jump in technology over the existing Suzlon S88s. Another key difference between 2020 and 2019 is when we talked to you all last year, we intended to fully take down the turbines. We were going to reuse the wiring that was underground, and also the concrete foundations for those turbines, but we were going to put up new towers to support the turbines. These GE 2.7 family that we'll be talking about, they're specifically designed for repowering, and one of the things we've learned is GE has designed a new ring that goes on top of an existing tower to join the existing tower to the new turbine. This is going to allow us to reuse all the existing towers out there, which, again, is a great thing, because, first of all, our landowners don't have to go through the repeated crane passes it would take to decommission, fully decommission a turbine and put one back up. Also, we believe it's going to lessen the impact on the local roads, it's going to make this a quicker process, and generally less impactful on the neighbors and our landowners and the residents of the county at whole. So those are the two major differences between 2019, when we talked before, and 2020. I do want to stress that last year, we had, at the request of the Ryan Wetlands folks, agreed to permanently decommission turbines 84 and 86, which are both in Lee County. We absolutely, as I mentioned, fully intend to permanently decommission turbines 84 and 86, as we talk about this repowering here in 2020. One of the things I mentioned that, again, the turbines, since we are going to be reusing the towers, will be the same height as the current turbines that are there, plus or minus about a meter. I think the joiner ring, you'll hear through the testimony, is approximately a meter, but the residents of the county will see a bigger rotor diameter, and it's interesting, if any of you have been through Ohio, you see the Green River Project, which is right next to ours, sometimes it looks like the same project, you will see those turbines are all about the same height, but the Green River turbines do have a larger rotor diameter, and that is what you will see consistency through that when this repowering is approved and completed. So again, all the conditions that were ultimately approved by the county in 2019, we are fully prepared and ready to live with those conditions as well in 2020. So we really hope that this streamlines the job that's before you right now, and hopefully allows this process to go through in a less impactful manner on your time than it was in 2020. And again, I want to stress that we fully appreciate that you are all volunteering here. So specific to Lee County, here's what you'll hear from our witnesses, is that, again, we have an application pending for an SUP. The application is to repower 58 turbines. What you'll hear is that we ultimately only will likely repower 51 of those turbines in Lee County. We're certain that, again, turbines 84 and 86 will be permanently decommissioned. There are others that we're looking at right now for decommissioning, but for engineering and other reasons, we're not certain, as we sit here tonight on December 16th, which specific turbines those are. What you will hear is we have had engineers out in field inspecting the foundations and the different strings and connections with the turbine, but that process is still ongoing. And just a couple points in conclusion. Again, we're very excited for the opportunity to talk to you here this evening. Obviously, we think Lee County is a great place to work and invest in. If we weren't really committed to that, we would not have been here now for the third time on the Big Sky Project, so hopefully you appreciate that, too. And again, we're excited to be able to provide, hopefully, some very needed economic impact here as we come out of the economic downturn related to COVID. We're excited to be able to restart the clock on property tax. I'm certain that's very important to the county and the other taxing districts, and we're, again, very excited to have a project with new turbines that is less dense than what you have out there right now, and hopefully this is the direction that wind development's going in Illinois, which is, you know, newer turbines that are more spaced out than some of the original Circuit 2011 projects that we're talking about here. So to my right is Jim Cutie. Jim will be the first witness that you'll hear from this evening, and you may remember last year, Pattern Development was the developer for this repowering. This time, Jim's company, Third Planet Wind Power, will be in that role, and the great thing about Jim is he's not only a developer, but also an engineer. So if you may remember, we had three witnesses from Pattern. Talked last time, Jim is going to be able to cover all of that, and he'll be able to do it from an engineering perspective, which I think will be even more valuable to all of you. So once Jim has completed his testimony, anticipating that you all will probably still have questions with regard to shadow flicker, we will have a shadow flicker expert available to testify from Burns &amp; McDonnell, one of our project engineer. I'm certain that you all probably still have questions about sound, obviously a very important criteria, not only in the way your ordinance is structured, but also with the impact on Lee County residents, so we will have our sound analyst and expert available to testify. We have renewed all of our communications impact studies, whether that's AM/FM television emergency management. We'll be able to take you through that process, and also to have our ecologist available, who has done not only the impacts on endangered species, but as Jim will talk about, some of the other reports and aspects that STANTEC has been looking at with regard to making sure we protect the environment and the ecology of the area, which is sensitive in parts during both our decommissioning and repowering process, as well as the operation and maintenance of the project after it's repowered. The application's very straightforward. Hopefully, you found that we not only listed the criteria in the ordinance, but how we believe that we met those criteria. There is one waiver request, and that's on page 1-2 of the application, and I think this is something that Lee County has granted to other wind projects in the past, I know we discussed it last year, but that your ordinance requires that the project be substantially underway within one year of the SUP being granted. We absolutely do anticipate, and certainly now that we have the benefit of going through 2019, that we will be underway within one year, but we would ask for a waiver of that requirement out to three years, just to account for any construction delays. One of the things that has been happening because of COVID is sometimes there are supply line disruptions that are COVID-related, and also out in the field, given worker and safety protections, sometimes contractors are down for an extended period of time if one of their crew members or several tests positive. So that waiver is even more important, perhaps, in 2020 because of COVID than it was in 2019. And again, we thank you for your time and attention. We hope that in the end, you're as excited about this repowering as we are, and through the application testimony and materials that we plan to enter into the record, we hope that we earn your recommendation for this repowering. And Judge, that concludes my opening remark.
Thank you, and you may call your first witness.
Judge, I will call Jim Cutie.
Cutie, you want to raise your right hand for me, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Have a seat.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Mr. Cutie, can you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stryker. First name, James, last name is Cutie. It's K-U-T-E-Y.
What is your business address?
My business address is 3801 PGA Boulevard, Suite 904, and that's Palm Beach Gardens in Florida.
Briefly take the board members through your educational background.
Yes, as Mr. Stryker mentioned, I'm an engineer by education. I have an undergraduate degree in chemical engineering, graduate work, and extensive experience in nuclear engineering, and an MBA in management, all from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in upstate New York, in Troy, New York.
Sir, how are you currently employed?
I'm currently employed as the Chief Development Officer for Third Planet Wind Power, and as the president of NaturEnr USA LLC.
All right, can you just spell Natural Enr for the record, please?
Natural Enr is N-A-T-U-R-E-N-E-R.
And what are your current job responsibilities?
In my current position, I'm responsible for the overall and the day-to-day development, operations, and financial performance of wind energy projects across the US. At NaturEnr, I also have additional responsibilities for the operation of its balancing authorities. Its balancing authorities are responsible for balancing load and generation fundamentally, and most importantly, in Pacific Northwest.
And we're here to talk about project development. Can you describe your experience in that field?
Yes. Yeah, as a project developer and as a project manager, I sort of quarterback, if you will, project development, acquisitions, transactions, all which entail coordinating a team of subject matter experts to ensure that each portion of the project is progressing as needed to meet the overall objectives of the investors.
Sir, are you the lead developer for the Big Sky Project?
I- I am the lead developer of the Big Sky Project at this point.
How long have you been with Third Planet Wind Power?
I've been with Third Planet Wind Power for approximately 13 and a half years.
All right. And prior to that, have you had any other experience in the wind industry?
Yes. Prior to my position at Third Planet Wind Power, I was employed by FPL Energy, which is now Nextera Energy Resources. They are the largest US developer of renewable assets in the US.
How long were you with that field?
I was with FPL about seven years. And then prior to that, I was, as a nuclear engineer, I was employed by the Knowles Atomic Power Laboratory, which is a government laboratory, then operated by GE and Lockheed Martin. And the laboratory supported research, development, and operations of nuclear, of the nuclear propulsion systems, submarines, and aircraft carriers.
Been in the energy business for a long time?
My entire career.
Okay. And then of your entire career, how long have you been specifically working on wind energy or renewables development?
Approximately 30, approximately 20 years at this point.
And during that time, how many megawatts, just a gross amount, have you been in charge of development?
Approximately 2,000 megawatts I've been directly involved with.
And have you ever managed a project similar to the one we're talking about here, Big Sky?
Yes, I've managed development-stage wind projects of a similar size in multiple markets in the US. This is the first repower project that I've managed. However, Third Planet has thoroughly investigated repowering project opportunities in different markets, particularly in ERCOT. We're also working closely with third-party engineering and construction companies that have completed repowering projects in the past to ensure that all the proper considerations, you know, are taken into account.
Cutie, I've put in front of you what's been marked as petitions, Exhibit 1. Do you recognize this document?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you tell the board what that document is?
Yes, that is the BSW Devco LLC application that was submitted to Lee County for the special use permit and submitted on November 20th, 2020.
And were you involved in the preparation of that document?
Yes, I was.
Okay. What was your involvement?
I coordinated the assembly of the document, as well as the technical information that goes in there, collecting a lot of the technical information, you know, from consultants and third parties.
Fair to say that you were the lead coordinator of the special use permit application?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Cutie, you mentioned that was submitted on November 20th. Is there any information in the application that needs to be updated?
Just one item, and it is on Exhibit A, which is the site plan and topographical map. The substation is identified in the wrong place on that map. It is identified as being in Bureau County. It is, the substation is indeed in Lee County.
That, is that substation that's north of the Village of Ohio, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. We've also added another map to the Exhibit A, and that map details, to the best of our current knowledge, which of the 17 turbines will be decommissioned and which of the 97 turbines will be repowered.
You brought a blown-up map of the project layout, as you're expected, right?
Yes, we did. I believe that's in front of me, and that's the same map that is in Exhibit A.
Heard of that, if you want to, during your testimony. So let's turn to the Big Sky repowering that we're here to talk about. If you can just take the board through what the purpose of your testimony is going to be this evening.
Sure. This evening, I'll be discussing fundamentally the petition for the special use for the Big Sky Project. I'll be providing a general description and the rationale for the project. I'll be discussing the entities that are part of the development, the construction, and the operation of the project. We'll talk about other agreements that will be entered into as part of the development and construction process. We'll talk about the permitting process that has taken place to date and that is ongoing. We'll discuss the studies and the agency consultations for the project to date, and further describe how the project has complied with all the applicable Lee County ordinance standards and requirements. And finally, we'll briefly discuss the repowering process itself.
Mr. Cutie, have you brought a presentation here with you this evening?
Yes, I have, Mr. Stryker.
And I'm going to mark that as petitioner's Exhibit 2. And before I turn it over to you to talk about that presentation, if you could, just talk a little bit about the relationship between Third Planet, Big Sky Wind LLC, and the applicant here tonight, BSW Devco. How does everything fit together?
Certainly. Big Sky Wind LLC and the applicant, BSW Devco LLC, are both owned by Everpower Wind Holdings Incorporated. Everpower Wind Holdings Incorporated owns a portfolio of approximately 750 megawatts of wind energy projects across the country. Due to contractual limitations for Big Sky Wind, Big Sky Wind being a typical financing vehicle, the repower is being done under BSW Devco LLC. Once the development process is completed, we anticipate that BSW Devco will merge with Big Sky Wind LLC. Third Planet is working with BSW Devco to develop and eventually construct the project. Third Planet is fundamentally acting as a consultant to BSW Devco. And finally, another player involved is RWE Energy Service, and they're expected to continue the operations and management of the project during the construction process. After the repowering is complete, we anticipate that GE will provide ongoing O&amp;M services once their turbines are erected on the site.
That's a couple more things about Third Planet. How long has it been in existence?
We founded that in 2007, so it's just a little over 13, 13 and a half years.
And it's also an owner and operator of wind projects?
Yes, we're the owner and operator of several wind projects. We formed the company to develop, construct, and manage renewable energy projects in the US. We operate across the US with a focus on Texas, the ERCOT market, and the Midwest.
And is there anybody besides yourself at Third Planet that's involved with the Big Sky repowering?
Yes, Third Planet, we've, at Third Planet, we've developed several hundred megawatts of renewable energy projects. We have a very small but experienced team. We currently are focused on operational optimization and development consulting services, like we're talking about this evening. The team supporting the Big Sky Project is myself and my partner and CEO, Walter Camp, each of us with over 30 years of energy-related experience. We're also working collaboratively with both Everpower and RWE so that the project timeline is maintained.
Let's turn to the repowering, then I'm going to turn it over to you to take the board members through your presentation.
Alice, have a electronic version?
I can send you one to my laptop.
Right now, you can't? That'd be great.
I don't think I can because...
Off the record, off the record. We're due for a break in...
Perfect. If we're going to take a break, Judge, I can stick it on a thumb drive in Dallas. Perfect time for a break.
We're unmuted, guys. Michael?
Mike.
You're unmuted, just so you know. I don't care. I don't. I want you to. Okay. Are we all set? Are you all set?
All right, back on the record. Um, we took a short break and you may continue, Mr. Stryker. I understand you now have the presentation on a thumb drive so people on Zoom can see it.
That's correct, Judge. And, um, Mr. Cutie, if you could take us through your presentation.
Uh, thanks again, Mr. Stryker. Uh, thank you, Judge, uh, Mr. Boonestraw, CBA members. And we've given you handouts of, uh, this very short presentation that I'll go through right now. Uh, first of all, the petitioner has already noted is BSW Devco. Uh, BSW Devco did receive a, uh, uh, SUP on April sixteenth, twenty nineteen for the repowering of the, uh, Suzalon turbines with GE wind turbines that, uh, a year and a half ago. Uh, since then, market and economic factors have challenged, uh, that twenty nineteen planned repowering, and it did not close. BSW Devco is now reapplying for a Lee County SUP for an updated repowering project, the highlights of which are the project will employ ninety-seven GE turbines in both Bureau and Lee County. The project will permanently decommission seventeen, uh, of those wind turbine generators. The project will repower up to fifty-eight wind turbines in Lee County. As Mr. Stryker mentioned, we expect that to be fifty-one. The project will use, uh, GE two-point-seven one-sixteen turbines, which is a family of repowered turbines developed by GE, which will be derated to two-point-five megawatt one-sixteen or two-point-three, uh, one-sixteen profiles, which are the same configuration that was approved back in twenty nineteen. And also different from twenty nineteen, the project will reuse, uh, the, well, it will use the existing foundations. That was the plan in nineteen, but in, uh, the current, uh, SUP application, we intend to reuse the towers. In support, uh, the activities that are underway right now and, uh, mostly complete, noise and shadow flicker study, communication studies, environmental and wildlife studies, uh, and agricultural impact mitigation agreement. Those are all complete at this point, and they're reflected in the application. Ongoing is the engineering, the procurement, and the construction-related permits and agreements, which will follow the permitting hearings. Next slide, uh, I just included some information on who we are, and it follows my earlier testimony. Uh, BSW Wind LLC, which is the small box on the left-hand side on the bottom, is, uh, and BSW Devco owned by Everpower Wind Holdings. Uh, Big Sky Wind LLC is that typical financing, uh, special purpose entity, which has a lot of restrictions on what they can do because of the financing and the debt holders. They, uh, can't, for instance, enter into construction-related contracts and the like. Hence, we use BSW Devco, the petitioner, to facilitate the repowering activities, and it's anticipated that those two entities will merge following the completion of the project, and it is very typical of how the, how, uh, special entities work. On the operations side, as I mentioned, RWE Energy Services, uh, which is formerly Eon Energy Services, they continue to operate, uh, do the maintenance and manage the Big Sky Wind Farm. That's the entity that is probably most familiar with the locals and the landowners and who interface with them, uh, routinely. Uh, RWE Energy Services administers over twenty different wind projects across the country and, uh, and, and, uh, manages probably, uh, around thirty-five hundred megawatts of, uh, wind energy. Next, I included, uh, a Big Sky Wind project map, uh, the large map, which, uh, we entered into, uh, which we, uh, showed earlier. This, uh, map shows the ninety-seven turbines that are expected to be, uh, repowered and the seventeen that are expected to be decommissioned. And a little later in this presentation, I'll go into the criteria that we use to select those seventeen. But, uh, first and on the next slide, the, uh, listed the repowering benefits, and, uh, and I'll go through them and provide some detail. The repowering results, uh, first of all, in the reduction of the number of turbines, you know, from a hundred and fourteen to ninety-seven, while maintaining the same, uh, approximate megawatt rating of the project. The, uh, planned reuse of the towers significantly reduces the overall impact of the project, uh, relative to the twenty nineteen plan, uh, that planned to replace the towers. The impact is reduced by less transportation, less large equipment, uh, and by less disruption and use of the, uh, local roads, uh, in the project vicinity. Next, no modifications are anticipated, uh, to the transmission system, to the substation. Uh, minor, uh, changes possible on the collection system, uh, and no changes expected on the O and M building. Minor changes in the collection system will result when we remove a turbine from a circuit. We'll need to put a splice in there, uh, so that we can continue that, uh, circuit, obviously. Also, there are studies underway, uh, the electrical capacity studies, which will help us determine, uh, how to best balance the new ninety-seven turbines on the existing collection lines. Next, the project will continue to pay land and property tax payments to landowners, uh, uh, in the local taxing jurisdictions. It's anticipated that the total land payments, you know, made by the project will increase as a result of the wind power. These are more energetic machines. Uh, additionally, they'll live higher on the depreciation curve, and hence their tax, uh, uh, the tax impact associated with those will be greater. The project will, uh, employ up to a hundred and fifty, uh, well-paying jobs, uh, to be generated. The construction jobs include, uh, trades like electricians, heavy equipment operators, crane operators, uh, carpenters, and ironworkers. We're working right now with a couple of, uh, engineering procurements and construction contractors. Uh, both are very familiar with work in both Lee and Bureau counties, and they intend and have a strong track record of employing union labor. A community benefits program, uh, will be created, which will provide funding to be used to support local organizations, uh, and other programs, uh, to be determined, uh, through coordination and consultation with the nearby communities, such as the Village of Ohio. Next, the repower will result in a reduction of noise levels, uh, for the wind turbine generators at speeds below eight meters per second. When the ambient noise, you know, from the turbines is louder or greater, if you will, than the, uh, the prevailing wind conditions at the time, greater than eight megaw, uh, eight meters per second, uh, one tends to hear only the noise created by the wind, the rustling trees and grasses and the like. Uh, these new turbines, uh, from GE and new modern turbines used for repower are a lot quieter than these decade-old units that were, are out there. And finally, the repower will extend the useful life of the project for many years to come and resets the timeline of the project to an additional twenty years. So from repower commissioning, we expect that the project will exist for another twenty years. That'll benefit both participating and non-participating landowners, as well as the underlying taxing authorities. Next, I just included a slide, uh, which is, uh, a simple schedule, uh, or maybe not a schedule, but a pre-repower and a post-repower look at the project and tell you what the repower will do. The repowering will replace the nacelle, the rotor and blade set, the pad mount transformer at the base of the turbine, and the SCADA system. The SCADA system being the computer-controlled system that operates the park. Uh, Mr. Stryker mentioned earlier that we'll be reusing the towers. GE has developed a transition adapter plate, uh, that mounts atop of an existing, uh, uh, non-GE tower to adopt it to accept a GE nacelle. That's about, uh, three-foot-tall adopter, uh, adapter, and, uh, has been used successfully already in repowering projects around, uh, the country. Uh, net effect, uh, from a, uh, wind part perspective, we'll see a significant increase in what we call capacity factor. Uh, uh, the efficiency, uh, we'll see a cost reduction in operations and maintenance and overall an improvement in overall production. Operations and construction are planned to occur simultaneously, so payments to landowners and taxes will continue as the project is, parts of it are decommissioned and other parts of it are restored. Of course, the construction will employ a robust safety program. We are looking only at those contractors who have a demonstrated, uh, yeah, and, and, uh, historically positive, uh, robust safety program. And finally, the project will utilize, uh, federal tax credits, which will be expiring at the end of, uh, twenty-one. And the chart I included looks at the pre- and post-repower, and as you can see, that the overall size of the project remains the same. That's governed by our interconnection agreement with the, uh, with the utilities, uh, and that is not subject to change or negotiation with them. The original project achieved COD back in twenty-eleven. The, uh, new, uh, the repower project is expected, uh, to achieve, uh, commercial operations in Q four twenty-one in December of twenty-one. We're replacing the hundred-and-fourteen S eighty-eight two-point-one machines and expect to use ninety-one, uh, two-point-seven turbines derated to two-point-five and six, uh, two-point-five units derated to two-point-three. That combination equals two-hundred-and-forty megawatts, as Mr. Stryker, uh, told us before.
Let me ask you one question there. The two-point-seven unit and the two-point-five unit, those are all the same units, right? It's just a computer control?
All the same. All the same. Uh, the two points, uh, the turbine itself is often called a two-point-seven capable machine. Two-point-seven is the, uh, largest output that the machine can make. Then the machines, uh, have, uh, uh, software inserted in them that limit their output to either two-point-five or to two-point-three.
They all come off the manufacturing line the same?
Uh, and that's exactly why, uh, GE developed this, so that they could produce one assembly line to produce three different sizes. And the three different sizes are, are typically used in this capacity where a developer needs to meet a interconnection capacity number by, you know, choosing so many of A and so many of B to equal a number.
That was, you heard me talk about the puzzle you have to put together, but you have to choose the software packages to tell GE that I want a two-point-five output or a two-point-three so you can put that puzzle together to equal two-hundred-and-forty megawatts?
That's correct. That is correct. And finally, the O and M is currently done by RWE Energy Services, and we anticipate that GE will be the, uh, operator, uh, in maintenance, uh, responsible for their new turbines under a long-term agreement, typically a fifteen- or twenty-year agreement. Uh, just looking at, uh, on the next slide, at decommissioning plans, uh, as Mr. Stryker mentioned earlier, we intend to, uh, uh, decommission, or we've committed to decommission number eighty-four and number eighty-six. Those turbines have had, uh, and, uh, an impact, an objectionable impact on the Ryan Wetland Preserve up there north of Lee County. And there's additionally five other turbines that we anticipate we will, uh, 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 decommission in Lee County. Uh, how do we come up with, uh, those? First of all, uh, looked at, uh, local resonances and local objections, uh, and the object, and the objective on our part was to minimize both noise and shadow flicker. Additionally, uh, we want to minimize the impact on participating landowners, as I mentioned earlier, and, uh, limit the removal of any turbine from a landowner who had only one turbine under lease. That way, all previous participating landowners would continue to participate and receive, you know, some form of compensation. Uh, another important factor was to balance the wind turbine generators on each collection circuit so that we didn't overload any circuits, and, uh, we minimize the collection system upgrades that were necessary to be done. And that's similar, the plug-in, uh, everything in your house in the single, uh, uh, circuit, which would quickly overload it and trip the breaker. This is just, uh, that same concept on a larger scale. As I said earlier, feedback from Soil and Water Conservation District regarding the turbines eighty-four and eighty-six near the, oh, Wetland, Ryan Wetland and Sand Prairie, uh, area were, uh, significant, uh, uh, objection, significantly objectionable. With discussions and feedback from the folks at the Village of Ohio for some turbines that were close to them, and overall turbine production and elimination of adverse, uh, turbine wake effects. And wake effects are the effect of a s, one turbine on its neighbors. And, uh, the final slide just looks at, uh, our early look at what the project's schedule looks like. You know, we'll use most of twenty, uh, for the development activities, uh, most of which are nearing completion. However, hearings and engineering, uh, continue at this point. At the end of this year, we're looking at, uh, you know, as I said, uh, permit applications, uh, design and engineering. Uh, next year, uh, early next year, we hope to finish up with all the CBA hearings. Uh, February through May of twenty-one, we think will be site mobilization and preparation. That'll follow, uh, the frost-free time on the roads so that we can put, uh, heavy-duty vehicles on the road for delivery and removal of some equipment. Uh, the summer months will see the beginning of construction. Uh, and again, commissioning and decommissioning activities will happen in parallel, and that all hopefully, uh, finishes up in December when we intend to complete construction and meet commercial operations.
Thank you for taking us through that, Mr. Cutie. Let me ask you a couple of, uh, related follow-up questions. I, I think you, uh, told the board that we're applying to repower up to fifty-eight turbines in Lee County, but we only plan to really repower fifty-one.
That's correct.
And I think you said that the map indicates the turbines that we're looking at decommissioning right now.
That's correct.
For clarity, we will agree to permanently decommission turbines eighty-four and eighty-six in Lee County.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, while the other turbines indicated, neither Lee or Bureau are ones that we're looking to decommission, we just can't be certain of those right now, but we're working towards that.
That's correct. And, uh, the missing ingredient there is, uh, the advanced engineering analysis that, uh, tells us of any circuit issues, circuit overloads, short-circuit, uh, issues, et cetera. Uh, additionally, uh, we're looking at foundations, uh, doing visual inspections of foundations to ensure ourselves that there's no limitations on those foundations.
In the interest of clarity, there will be no new foundations poured as part of this repowering, correct?
That is correct.
The only places in Lee County where you'll see repowered turbines is where turbines are currently.
That's correct.
And, um, you took us through the reasons and, and what you're looking at is you consider, uh, decommissioned turbines. Um, and I know you also took us through the timeline. Can you talk about how the repowering will be financed? Because I think you mentioned before, um, that financing concerns along with equipment supply lines, et cetera, led to the repowering, uh, going off the rails in, uh, twenty-one.
Is the, yes, sir. Yeah, the project will be financed in a very similar manner that most wind projects in the U.S. and most energy projects are financed today. The project itself will raise, uh, uh, construction loans, and we're in the process of that now, which fund the equipment and the construction of the project. Uh, that construction loan typically is paid off on, at commercial operation by equity from the equity owners of the project.
The project's been in existence for ten years now. Um, how is the project output or the power produced by the project currently being sold? And will that change as a result of the repower?
That's a, yep, great question. The project does not have, uh, what we consider a classic power purchase agreement for the energy. The energy is sold, uh, alternately in the PJM market on a merchant-type basis. The project does have, uh, revenue contracts in the form of capacity sales agreements with PJM and contracts for the renewable energy credits, which are generated by the project, uh, with a private counterparty.
Okay. So we're not looking for a new offtake or power purchase agreement to make this repowering a reality?
We are not.
Um, then let's talk a little bit about the community outreach, um, that you've been engaged in. I think you mentioned that, uh, we had spoken, certainly with the Village of Ohio, about decommissioning certain turbines, but, um, um, can you talk about, uh, what type of contact we've had with Ohio? had with Ohio? Are there any community development agreements that we're going to enter into with the village?
Sure. You mentioned earlier that Pateran, who was the original developer of the repower project back in 2019, we followed up on a lot of the work that they did in the repowering effort. That project team and our project team has been in contact with participating and non-participating landowners, the non-participating landowners being typically the neighbors without a turbine on their property. We've been in contact with the Village of Ohio to discuss the project, answer questions, you know, with the board members and other members of the public. Additionally, RWE, the operator and maintenance folks for the project, have hosted open houses, you know, for the public and landowners, and they get a lot of visitors from the landowners who stop by the O&M building to ask, and we provide answers to their questions, and engage the community in less formal effort that way.
As you mentioned, obviously engagement with our participating landowners is important to the project as well. Is it fair to say that for those that will be losing or that currently host turbines that will be decommissioned, will those landowners typically remain involved with the project in some way?
Yeah, the project currently has wind leases, certain access and transmission easements, and waivers related to setbacks to noise and other, and shadow flicker, for example. You know, each of those agreements represents a negotiation with the landowners in the specific communities to secure their rights in addition, you know, in exchange for compensation. The existing leases, you know, even take into account a repowering event like we're on the verge of, and describe payments and how they'll be adjusted as a result of this. While we're removing 17 turbines, no participating landowners, as I stated earlier, will be losing all payments associated with the project, even if that landowner loses their only single turbine. They'll still have underground collection on their property, which they'll receive a royalty for.
Talking further about the community benefits, am I correct, and I think that probably the board members remember from 2019, that the project had committed a $50,000 community benefit payment to the Village of Ohio for repowering move forward? Would that be something that we were still going to do?
Yes, indeed. We, should the repowering move forward, the project has committed $50,000 to the Village of Ohio to set up community benefits program, as I mentioned in the presentation I made earlier. You know, additionally, the project has committed $10,000 to the Ryan Wetland and San Prairie Land and Water Reserve to support the work that the Soil and Water Conservation District is doing in Bureau County. We constantly look for and will continue to look for other opportunities that come up, you know, certainly to share in our successes.
And, you know, sort of dovetailing with our community engagement, I know we're out in the field a lot, talking about other key agreements that we need to either, or that we either have entered into or need to secure, such as waivers that they have a cultural impact mitigation agreement we're talking about. But could you take the board, you know, briefly through what the scope of agreements that we need to look at as part of this development are?
Sure. Outside of waiver agreements, leases with certain landowners that I previously discussed, we'll be executing a few other agreements as part of the development process. We have executed and it remains valid, an agricultural impact mitigation agreement, the AMA Agreement. That's what the Illinois Department of Agriculture, wherein we commit to certain measures to ensure that the project is both constructed and eventually decommissioned in such a way as to preserve the integrity of the farmland for the future. We're also, we're also in discussions with various area road districts and counties to prepare and execute road use agreements. Those agreements will be executed by BSW Devco as the developer and the road districts to govern how we use and modify roads needed for the purposes of construction, and particularly delivery of the large equipment that's necessary. We're also working with some subcontractors, typically the technical folks, like the electrical study agreements that, and will need to update our interconnection service agreement to ensure that the party is associated with that, you know, of the operators of the grid are aware in the agreement of the new turbines, their capabilities, and their particular electrical concepts. Finally, we'll assign various financing documents to fund the construction, the, you know, long-term, you know, equity in the project.
And I know we'll touch on this later, but am I also correct that we will be following the existing decommissioning agreement with the county for the decommissioning of the 17 turbines?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. And then we will be also having, entering into a new decommissioning agreement for the ultimate, at some point, the future decommission of the repowered project. Okay. Mr. Key, let me transition a little bit and talk about some of the zoning and ordinance requirements that Lee County has in place, and how we plan to make sure that we adhere to those requirements. One of the first requirements is that Lee County and the Zoning Board of Appeals shall hear evidence relating to matters pertaining to public health, safety, and general welfare. So let's talk about those topics. If you could, for the board members, just speak to the project's impact generally on health, safety, and welfare, and how we intend to both preserve and promote those aspects.
Sure. Since this is a repowering situation, we recognize that Lee County has already, in prior, determined that the project was in the public interest and would not negatively affect public health, safety, and general welfare. We believe that the repowered project will even further mitigate any negative concerns of the previous Big Sky Wind Project. As turbines are quieter at lower wind speeds, there will be fewer in number, and will be equipped with the newest and latest technology. The project is also committed to follow all applicable laws and regulations to ensure that the project is operated in the utmost safest manner. The project will also generate approximately 30% more clean energy, which could displace, you know, some of the less clean forms of electric generation locally, and improve the air quality to promote health and welfare of the county and state residents. And finally, the project is going to generate significant tax revenue and income to both landowners and the local communities and taxing authorities. This influx of capital indeed promotes health, safety, and general welfare by supporting programs that benefit Lee County residents.
And, you know, while we are in an agricultural district, let's talk about what we see as the project's impact or effect on the character of the neighborhood.
Because it's, again, as a repowering, you know, situation, you know, we are reducing the number of turbines on the project. We will be returning, you know, 17 footprints, if you will, back to an agricultural environment, and don't expect the project to have any negative effect on the neighborhood.
And dovetailing on that, one of the next criteria is what's the impact on surrounding properties?
Unlike a new project, again, the surrounding properties are somewhat accustomed to wind turbines, and as such, we don't anticipate a negative effect as a result of a repower. And of course, we have been in contact with the surrounding property owners as necessary, you know, to obtain, you know, waivers of setback requirements and any project noise exceedances above state control board requirements. Our sound consultant of Burns and McDonnell will be here in the near future on one of the dates we discussed earlier, and they'll go into the detail in and around shadow flicker and the noise requirements and any exceedances and how we're going to deal with them. But I believe a project is safe, you know, from that perspective, and will have no negative impacts on the surrounding properties.
Certainly, the board, and as you mentioned, we're looking at, we will enter into the road use, the road districts we touched on, but the board's interested in what effect of any of the projects is going to have on local traffic conditions. Can you talk about that?
Sure. As previously discussed, we're currently in discussions with, you know, the county on the road use agreements to mitigate any negative effects on traffic during the construction phase of the program. However, and then following commercial operation, there will be no noticeable increase, you know, to traffic at all, as the current operational and maintenance requirements and trips in staff are not expected to materially change with the repowered facility.
I know the ultimate intent of this project is, of course, to help the environment, but we also have environmental concerns as we're going forward with both the decommissioning and repowering process. If you could talk about what effect of any of the project will have on the local environment in general, how we plan to deal with that?
Sure. As part of the application process, we've undertaken numerous studies and employed consultants to ensure that the project has a minimal effect on any environmental concerns, and on balance significantly promotes the protection of the environment. We have worked with local environmental organizations and jurisdictions to ensure that we are constructing and operating the repowered project in accordance with their recommendations and their guidance, using best practices currently in wind industry.
Finally, if you could just talk about how the project intends to comply with rules, regulations, and applicable standards?
Sure. As, as discussed really throughout the application, which has been, put it now into the record, this application complies with all Lee County ordinance standards and will continue to be constructed and operated, you know, in compliance with all applicable federal, state, local laws, and all applicable regulations.
A couple of housekeeping matters, if I could. I'm going to put in front of you what I'm going to mark as petition's exhibit three. If you could take a look at that document, please?
Yes, this is a representative version of the BSW Devco Special Use Hearing Notice that was mailed out for the purpose of notifying residents within the project and within a half a mile of the project of this public hearing, and I believe that went out to some 800 addresses.
Correct. And if I could, sir, turn your attention to what I'm going to mark as petition's exhibit four, if you could describe to the board what that is?
Yeah, this exhibit four is, is BSW Devco's Special Use Hearing Notice Certificate of Publication that went out to the Amboy Newspaper back in November, I believe it was November. Yes, it was, November 25, 2020. And that was for the purpose of notifying residents of, again, this public hearing.
And I know, sir, that says this is proof that publication was, if I'm correct, they've also sent us an actual copy of what they did publish that's dated November 25, 2020.
Correct.
And this is the original.
Yes, sir.
Sir, then if I could turn your attention, what I'm going to mark as, describe to the board members what that is.
Yes, indeed. Exhibit five is, again, BSW Devco's Special Use Hearing Permit, Hearing Notice. It's a certificate of publication. This one from the Dixon Newspaper dated the 24th of November, 2020, for the purposes of, again, notifying the public of this hearing.
November 20, it was published on the 28th?
Published on the 28th. The agreement was done on the 24th.
Correct. And they'd also provided us with the original, what was published in the 24th?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Right. Returning back to the application, I know, and as you've mentioned throughout this, this application requires a tremendous amount of money.
That's correct.
Okay. And I assume one of those agencies was the only, Department of Natural Resources, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. If you could tell the board members what type of engagement has the project done with the Department of Natural Resources, is it all called IDNR?
Yeah, IDNR or the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, we engage them, and we engage them through an environmental consultant. That environmental consultant is called STANTEC Environmental, and we've gone, with them, gone through what's called the ECOCAT consultation process with the state. ECOCAT is the ecological compliance assessment tool that identifies endangered threatened species, sensitive wetlands, and sensitive environmental areas, you know, at risk to wildlife and plants. Further, we have engaged with IDNR in seeking an incidental take permit for potential impacts during construction. STANTEC is currently working on finalizing the incidental take permit. The incidental take permit is for two threatened species. One is the Blandings turtle, and the second is the ornate box turtle, which inhabit a small portion of the project area.
Okay. If you could just describe to the board what an incidental take permit or effort, you could refer to as an ITP.
Yeah, ITP or incidental take permit is essentially permission from the environment, from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, you know, should we harm or kill, you know, one of these threatened species during the process. As part of the incidental take permit, we are required to work with a, you know, a qualified environmental consultant like STANTEC, and to take appropriate precautions in the field to prevent any takes. You know, for instance, for these two species of turtles, we will, when we're working in the area where they're known to be, we will use silt fence, and we will basically block off, you know, those areas and eliminate construction vehicles from entering that area. Further, we'll use a certified biologist on the ground during construction in those areas to walk the field and ensure that we're taking all the right precautions to prevent any incidental takes.
Well, it's called an incidental take, it doesn't mean that we plan to or intend to harm any of these species.
Certainly, and by no means does it mean that.
Really, I think, is it fair to say what it means is that we've put a plan in place to protect them, and the plan meets best practices, and if there is an accident, we know we've met those best practices.
Well, well described, yes. Well described, and that's exactly what it means.
All right. Then along those lines, have we been in touch with the Soil and Water, the appropriate Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yep. The project has been reviewed by both the Lee County and the Bureau County Soil and Water Conservation Districts as part of the application process. In addition, the presence of the Ryan Wetland and San Prairie has taken, has been taken into consideration through many of the components of the application, including our ultimate decision to decommission and remove the two nearby turbines, number 84 and number 86.
And also, I know we've mentioned the Ryan Wetland and San Prairie Conservation District, I believe, a couple times. Have we also been in contact with them?
Yes, indeed. Yes, sir.
And then let's talk about bird and bat conservation strategy. What have we done with regard to that?
Yes, and again, using STANTEC Environmental as our environmental consultant, we intend and the objective is to comply with all federal laws, regulations, including the preparation of what's called bird and bat conservation strategy. That's in accordance with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Guidelines. This conservation strategy will include a number of items, including dates when we can clear trees, if that's necessary. if that's necessary, typically only during the winter between November and March 31st, which is outside of breeding season for most wildlife. The conservation strategy is a living document. It will be updated, consistent with any changes in Illinois Department of Natural Resources recommendation. We have received recommendations from the IDNR, and all those have been included in the Bird and Bat Conservation Strategy. It also includes certain turbine cut-in speeds from sunset to sunrise during certain parts of the year. And what does that really mean? That means that certain parts of the year, and this is for local bat populations, the turbines will start up at a higher wind speed than typically, than they would otherwise. In other words, instead of starting up at, say, three meters per second, they'll start up at five meters per second because the research shows that those lower wind speeds are typically harmful to bat populations during a specific time of the year.
The bats are more active at lower wind speeds?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's why you're going to want the turbine spinning at lower wind speeds and the bats are active?
Correct, sir. And also, the Bird and Bat Conservation Strategy requires environmental awareness training for all the construction personnel and reasonable speed limits to prevent any hazards to the wildlife that may exist in the project area.
We've had a lot of large rain events recently, so certainly one of the considerations when you're out in the field doing a construction is stormwater pollution prevention. Can you talk about what will, what steps will be taken?
Yes, sure. Stormwater prevention plans are typically construction-related deliverables wherein we'll ensure that we minimize any stormwater runoff and ensure that the project will have no negative impact to bodies of water in or around the project area. This is accomplished by a lot of silt fence, a lot of special considerations and, and activities of the like, so that stormwater runoff doesn't get to places where it typically doesn't go. Further, there'll be erosion mitigation measures and noxious weed control countermeasures immediately adjacent and within the project area.
Here's a little bit to talk about some of the studies and investigations that we've done. We talked earlier about IDNR. Can you speak specifically to the type of investigations that we've done with regard to avian and wildlife?
Sure. The issue and the analysis comes from mainly two sources. Initially, as part of the application, we're required to engage with IDNR, again, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, to undergo certain consultations as to wildlife impact through the ECOCAT system that I mentioned before. And additionally, for an even more comprehensive analysis, we had Stantec perform a site characterization study. This includes threatened and endangered species habitat assessment within the project boundary, and they'll speak more to this and their findings when Stantec appears before the board to give very specific testimony on that. But at the base level, they looked at the project area with an eye to the significant number of species that could be negatively impacted by the project, including, as I mentioned before, the ornate turtle and the Blandings turtle, other species like the western hog nose snake, the regal fertility butterfly, and the Indiana and northern long-eared bats, which are occupy the project area.
And while we're on the topic of Stantec, I'm going to present you with what's been marked as Petitioners Exhibit Six. If you could describe to the board what this is, please.
Yes, indeed. This is a March 11th, 2019 letter to Dee Duffy as the zoning and plat officer in Lee County, and it's a letter from Stantec Consulting as, in a response to the comments and the recommendations included in the Illinois Department of Natural Resources recommendations from, from March 11th.
And, sir, while this is dated 2019, is it still applicable as of today?
Yes, indeed. This was produced a year ago, and I specifically reached out to Stantec and verified that there were no changes and no additional or any less recommendations.
I assume our Stantec witness can elaborate on that.
Absolutely, he will.
Okay. Then, switching gears, we also performed an updated shadow flicker study for this application, correct?
Yes, we did. And again, we worked with the experts in that field. Those are the folks from Burns and McDonald. They performed a shadow flicker study, and they'll explain the dirty details of that and the, how that's done, how they performed such a study, how it's simulated, and answer any questions that you folks may have on that. And, but fundamentally, a shadow flicker study looks at residences. It looks at every side of a residence and, and looks to determine the maximum amount of shadow flicker from a rotating wind turbine. They found approximately 26 of 273 receptors in the field that exceeded 30 hours of shadow flicker per year. So when making the decision as to which of the 17 turbines to permanently decommission, the turbines that produce the most shadow flicker were specifically considered. The project committed to operating, you know, in accordance with the Illinois State Recommendation Guide Line for shadow flicker for all residences unless we obtain a landowner waiver of such recommendation. The study itself, the shadow flicker, is very conservative. It assumes that the sun is out, you know, on all days and that the wind turbines are operating, you know, at all times when the sun is out. But again, as Mr. Siker mentioned, the Burns and McDonald people will fill in all the details associated with that.
The board members will look forward to hearing from them. Am I correct to say one of the mitigating factors for shadow flickers, if it's impacting a certain resident at a certain time, you get to tail that turbine?
Absolutely. There are certain things one can do, certainly, you know, planting trees, you know, in front of windows that might be offensive, or curtailing the turbines are just two possible solutions. But we're in the process of identifying and obtaining waivers from all, from all affected, you know, landowners participating and not participating in the process.
One of the things we really talked a lot about here with the board in 2019 was potential impacts on signals, whether it's television, first responder, AM, FM, et cetera. Could you talk about whether or not we've commissioned any similar studies this time around for the application?
Yes, indeed. We used a firm well-known in the, this study area called ComSearch. They performed an engineering analysis to determine if the specific locations of the 97 turbines would interfere with off-air television station broadcast signals from land-based facilities directly to television receivers, which are typically line-of-sight, as these are the only signals really with the potential to be disrupted by the turbines. ComSearch found that, that the potential for disruptions exists for only 12 of the 65 currently licensed stations operating in the area. Further, in the unlikely event that interference is observed on the station, that a landowner desires to be able to watch, we're committed to working with the affected landowner to mitigate interference. This is simply, you know, one of the parts of being a good neighbor that we've committed to. You know, and, and that often takes the farm, or takes the form. If a landowner has a, an antenna, they're no longer able to receive a station because a turbine is interfering, interfering with it. We can, you know, look at cable, we can look at satellite TV, we can look at a variety of options.
You mentioned that noise reduction, or especially noise or sound reduction at lower wind speeds is going to be a key benefit of this repowering. Did we commission a study to confirm that?
Similarly, Burns and McDonald, again, performed comprehensive noise studies and modeling analysis for the proposed GE turbines, you know, based on Illinois Pollution Control Board noise regulations and best practices in the industry. We'll hear more about that from, again, the Burns and McDonald people when they come and give their testimony. But my understanding with these, these new turbines, in my experience, they'll produce significantly less noise at lower wind speeds than the Suzalon SAV-8 units at the same wind speeds. And we're committing, we certainly are committed to operate the project in accordance with the Illinois Pollution Control Board noise regulations at all residences, unless we obtain, you know, a waiver, as I mentioned before, from such, of the such requirements.
Following up on some of the work that you did with regard to signal interference, obviously television and radio reception is very important to the residents and their landowners, as well as the rest of the county. Perhaps of more significance is potential interference with emergency first responder communication systems. Was that specifically studied as part of this application?
Yes, it was, and the emergency services and communications that are typically used and used specifically are not typically what we consider line-of-sight transmissions. So we had ComSearch doing the assessment of the emergency services on all the turbines in their specific location, as well as E911 operators and, as well as land, mobile, and radio systems. As they will explain, you know, again, in more detail, based on the way that such emergency networks are set up, many of these systems overlap and are designed to operate reliably in, in a non-line-of-sight environment, meaning any signal blockage from a wind turbine does not materially degrade the reception of emergency responders. Further, mobile phone coverage is unaffected by the presence of wind turbines, and based on the location of the project, no impact on the licensed operations of either AM or FM radio broadcasts have been identified.
Sir, I'm going to, along those lines, present you with what's been marked as Petitioners Exhibit Seven. Do you recognize this document, sir?
Yes, Exhibit Seven here is a February 15th, 2019 letter from the U.S. Department of Commerce, an office called National Telecommunications and Information Administration, wherein they state that the agencies did not identify any concerns regarding radio frequency blockage.
Is this a letter that you would typically obtain as part of a wind farm?
Yes, it is, and because it was dated a year ago, I reached out to the folks at ComSearch and verified that this is still valid.
Moving on, Mr. Cutie. One of the things that is always important in the sighting process is talking about not only the locations, but what's around those locations and appropriate setbacks, et cetera. I, I believe that one of the county requirements in the code is that no turbine be constructed, excuse me, constructed closer than 350 feet from any property lines, roadway, railroad right away, right away from overhead transmission or distribution lines. How will we work to satisfy that requirement?
Sure. The project has chosen to reuse the same wind turbine generator locations in order to limit any construction impacts on landowner properties and on the environment, reduce construction traffic and heavy road, heavy loads on county roads, reduce the materials used in project constructions, and to shorten the construction duration as much as possible. Since the current turbine locations are existing and not able to be relocated, that is the specific reason that we're seeking to obtain setback waivers from the landowners to allow the turbine to be set back less than 350 feet as outlined within the ordinances. If we were to remove foundations and relocate foundations, the project itself would be uneconomical, and we would likely not do that. At a very high level, the current layout is anticipated, it is anticipated that there are going to be 11 waivers sought from 10 turbines, which are currently encroaching on setbacks. The reason for this is that turbine 106 currently encroaches on the setback on two different properties. Of these 11 waivers, 10 are with landowners with wind leases in place, and one is with a landowner with a collection line easement. As participating landowners, these waivers are mere formalities stemming from obligations contained in their lease structures.
All the setback waivers we're receiving are from what we define as participating landowners, meaning they have arms-length leases in place with the project.
That is correct.
Then, Mr. Cutie, Lee County requires that all wind turbines comply with Federal Aviation Administration recommendation, or, excuse me, regulations. Can you describe how we intend to comply with that?
Yes, the project will comply with all FAA regulations on wind turbines. The project has filed back in February 18th and has received determination of no hazards for the intended 97 turbines. Currently, they have, you know, determinations of no hazards for all 114. So they'll tell us which turbines needed, in a new array of 97, which need to be lit with red lights at night, white lights during the day in the current array that we're expecting from them. And then there's a Part II application where we will need to file a new form with the FAA within a few days, I'm not sure whether it's five or 10, of that turbine reaching its maximum new height. And that new height will be still 80-meter towers, but the height will be larger because the 116-meter rotor diameter is, will be greater than the 88-meter rotor diameter of the Suzalon SAV-8.
Judge, I'm about to switch gears. I know we're two hours into this now. How long do you plan to go tonight?
Well, I mean, part of that question is how much more do you think you have?
I think we're probably 70 to 80% of the way through. I know we're going to have Mr. Cutie back again.
Okay.
And throughout this hearing. We're happy to keep going, but I just want for the members comfort and for the staff.
Well, if you're suggesting you think you're going to go beyond 9:30, which is the theoretical witching hour, and you're offering to say that's it for tonight, that's final night.
I, I think it will. There's a small chance we get done by 9:30, but
Okay.
All right. Probably be 45 minutes more.
All right. Some house, some, some housekeeping matters. First off the record, Kelly. With regard to this map and the substation, I, again, heard the testimony, I just want to make sure what the public is able to look at as far as the map is correct. I've looked at it, and the map I have, there's a substation. It's a, it's a black circle very clearly in, in Bureau County. But I want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. I thought he said it was right. He said it showed it in.
Yeah. I believe it says Big Sky. I believe it says Big Sky Wind Project and that's shown in the center in Bureau County. That particular dot is, uh, however, that is actually across the border.
I'm thinking, Judge, we could introduce a separate exhibit.
Yeah, would you?
And we could also produce a slide that we could put up.
I think that's important.
Yeah, then we could have specific testimony on that topic and clear.
Okay, back on the record.
I have that in my notes already.
Back on the record, um, we were talking about the, a map that shows where the substation is that Mr. Cutie testified is not accurate. It appears that in the application, it is not an accurate map, but I have an offer from the petitioner to substitute. I presume at the next hearing, a map with the, uh, correct location of that substation.
That's correct, Judge. It's part of the second part of Mr. Cutie's testimony.
I also don't think the record is clear, but I marked Mr. Cutie's summary of his, the summary of his initial testimony as Petitioners Two. I'm going to reserve ruling on, um, well, I'll admit Petitioners One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. So we can clean that up tonight. And, um, then, when we went off the record and we're on break, I had a request from a necessary not to, not to, not to include, um, December 30th. So I'm going backwards. The next available date is the 21st. Then after that, the available dates go, now they go Monday, the 4th of January, Tuesday, the 5th of January, and Tuesday, the 19th of January. So at this point, I'm recessing these proceedings until this coming Monday, the 21st, beginning at 6 o'clock here on the third floor.
Judge, I thought that Monday was out, the 21st.
No.
Oh.
I, no.
All right, sorry, that one we can't do. Could we recess till the 4th?
Okay. All that happened on the 21st was Mr. Hughes said no, but that doesn't. There's still a quorum and the advantage to, um, having, having this on YouTube and having a court reporter is that Mr. Hughes can always see the testimony either on YouTube or read the transcript. And I was in the interest of, I thought it was the interest of everybody to keep going. But if you can't be here on the 21st, okay. Okay, so we'll, uh, recess the next session until the Monday, the 4th, 6 o'clock.
For that whole week, so that'll be good.
Yeah. Okay. And, and I don't know, I don't know if we're going to do four days that week, two here and two, and, but we'll get, we'll, not now.
I think the six.
Not, not now. Yeah. There are available dates. Let's just leave it at that. So Monday, the 4th, 6 o'clock, after all that.